And it wasn't three days until it had big spots all over. So I just said, "The heck with it."
I'd like to call the Mammell City Council meeting to order tonight. Councilmember Anderson is still not with us. He's still recovering at home. And Councilmember Vipperzan is traveling, so he could not be here. At this time, we have the invocation and pledge of allegiance, and that's going to be led by me tonight.
The most gracious heavenly Father, we're thankful for this day, Lord, and we're thankful for this community. We're thankful for those community members that are engaged, Lord, and that come out to the meetings to see the city conduct their business, Lord. We appreciate them and their efforts here tonight. We also thankful the council that has made an effort to be here and do the city's business, Lord. We'd ask you to be with our uniformed personnel, Lord, as this is just a tense time in our country, Lord, and be with them and protect them as they serve our citizens, Lord. We'd ask you to be with our military personnels. They do the same thing, Lord. They go overseas, they defend us, they fight for rights, Lord, that we only know that we have in America. And so we're thankful for the efforts that they give and for their families that sacrifice for them, because it's a sacrifice for their families when they're away from them, Lord. We'd ask you to bless the council tonight as they conduct the city's business and grant them wisdom and guidance that only you can give. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very, thank you very much. We have no special guests and announcements tonight. Next item is approved the minutes of the November 20th regular meeting. There's a copy of those minutes in your packets. Are there any corrections or additions to those minutes? Councilmember Mosley?
Just a minor one here. I've already visited with the city clerk here. On page five, at the very bottom, we were talking about the resolution on the AARP usage of City Hall. And it says, "A motion passed six to two," with, uh, it talked about Councilmember Anderson being absent. And I think Councilmember Holt was absent that night also, so it should have probably been a five, five to three vote. And so I'd like to make a motion that would correct those minutes and...
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second to amend the minutes and accept them as approved. Is that, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Mosley?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Is there any discussion on the motion or any other additions or corrections? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next item is public comment. And all the public comment cards that I have tonight, I think, are on items that are on the agenda. Let me verify that. Yes, so at this time, we will not have any public comment, and we will hear those as we get to the items that are on the agendas. Next item is financial statement review, and that's done at the second meeting of each month, so that will be at the next council meeting. Next item is procedural motion. I need a motion from the floor to read all resolutions and ordinances by title only tonight.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second to read all resolutions and ordinances by title only tonight. Is there a discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next item is unfinished business. We have the third reading of ordinance number 944, providing for the levy of a sales tax. Madam City Clerk, if you'd read that by title only?
Be it enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, and ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 944, and ordinance providing for the levy of a one-half of one percent sales and use tax within the City of Mammell, Arkansas, and prescribing other matters pertaining thereto.
Okay, um, this item is the item that, well, the next three items, ordinance 944, 945, and 946, are the items that almost everyone has listed on their cards, uh, public comment cards. So at this time, um, we'll hear from the public, uh, on these items. All right, first card I have is Mr. David Ray. If you would state your name and address for the record, Mr. Ray.
Good evening. My name is David Ray. I live at Three Horn Rim Place here in Mammell. I've, this is the third time in the last six weeks that I've joined you to share my thoughts on these ordinances and the tax increase issue. And I've spoken with you about why I believe that special elections are inherently unfair to the voters and result in extremely low turnout. I've shared with you some specific concerns that I have about this proposal in particular and why I don't feel it's necessary. So I'll keep my remarks as brief as possible this evening. I believe that we don't need higher taxes in Mammell, and I believe that we don't need higher taxes in Arkansas. Arkansas already has the third highest combined state and local sales tax of any state in the entire country. And we don't need to make them any higher. As long as we are in the top five in categories like that, we will never be in the top five in categories that we want to be in the top five in. Categories like top-five business climate, top-five in job creation, top-five in median household income, et cetera. The simple truth is that we cannot tax our way into prosperity. And because all sales taxes have to go to the voters for approval, voting to send this tax, to advance this tax increase to the voters, is essentially putting your personal stamp of approval on a tax increase from Mammell. The last thing that I'll say about this is that I feel that it's both sad and ironic that in the same week that our federal delegation voted unanimously to drastically reduce the tax burden of all Americans and all Arkansans, I'm here tonight asking you to please not advance this tax increase. Senators Bozeman and Cotton, Congressman Crawford, Hill, Westerman, and Womack all followed through on their pledge to the voters to support lower taxes, not higher taxes. And I would hope that each of you show the same kind of leadership that they showed this week and vote against these ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Next card I have is from Mr. Dean Elliott.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. I'm Dean Elliott, 12 Basswood Terrace. I hate to follow my good friend David Ray, but, but we are on opposite sides on this. This is not a, necessarily, an issue to raise taxes or to tax Mammell into prosperity. This deals with a need that the city has that I feel there's no other way to meet. In 1991, they did the first study of the need for the new interchange. 1995, they did another study. Each time, they've said they need the interchange. So this has been on the highway department's wish list since 1991, 26 years. Mammell's continued to grow, and I keep hearing, "Let's, let's leave this to the highway department. Let's let them pay for it." Well, we've been doing that for 27 years. In 1996, I was appointed to that city, this city board, and this was the number-one issue then. 1999, I was elected to serve in the legislature and served on the Transportation Committee, and I met with the highway department regularly on this very issue. They kept saying, "There's no money, there's no money, there's no money." In 2003, I began traveling to DC and was fortunate enough to work with a group to get an earmark to study this. There was $2.3 million appropriated by the federal government to study this. That's the only money that has gone into this. It's not from the highway department. This is not a priority of the highway department. In 2014, I was fortunate enough to be appointed to the transition team by Governor Hutchinson, specifically over the Highway Transportation Department Subcommittee. I worked with the director and many of the commissioners trying to get funding for this project, and there is, there is no money. Now, I'm hearing, "Oh, if we'll just wait another four or five years, maybe we will get the money." I moved here in 1991, and if you do the math, I turned 50 last week. I've worked for this for half my life, and I don't want to put another five or 10 years on a bet. This is something Mammell doesn't have to gamble on. This can happen next month, this can happen when the election is done, and we can have the interchange. We can build our tax base. And regardless of what folks say, unless we have a thriving retail area in Mammell, we will never grow our tax base, and I would appreciate a good vote on this. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Elliott. Next card I have is from Ms. Alicia Gillan.
Good evening, Alicia Gillan, 116 Daniel Circle, representing the city of, I'm sorry, representing the Mamma area Chamber of Commerce this evening. When we talk about the community service fee, which seems to be on the minds of every council member when they are seated, and how we can resolve that and eliminate that, we're always thinking of the residential side of things. However, what we have not really dived into is the business impact that it has on our local businesses that are currently in the City of Mammell and as we recruit new businesses to the area. When they're looking at their bottom line, if you're a huge industrial such as Molex or Kimberly-Clark or Dillard's, they have that based on the square footage of their building in their facility. That is a quarterly fee that is paid to the City of Mammell. So when they're looking at their mortgage or their rent and they're looking at their overhead, they have to adjust for that cost as well. When we're looking at new businesses to the area, a small boutique, a shoe store, or even Dreamy Spoon, who likes ice cream, right? Where's your husband? Whenever they're looking at, at, uh, coming to the City of Mammell, they have to fix that into their cost. So we are deterring a local small business to come to the City of Mammell because with the more, with the rent that it is and their overhead and the inventory, how can they even sustain and be prosperous in the City of Mammell? So when looking at community service fee, we have an opportunity to have our visitors pay for that, and I just encourage you to vote to get this to the ballot so that our business community and our residents can vote positively in that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gillan. Ms. Marion Scott, Coney.
Hi, Marion Scott, 118 Osage Drive, Mammell. Thank you for having me this evening, allowing me to speak. How about that budget meeting on Monday? Painful, it was painful. When I hear words in the air such as, "We can't afford to give raises this year." Now, we, we moved it forward, but those words were said. When we said, "We have to choose money over safety," that did happen. Those words were said. We don't have to be in this position where we have to scrimp and save and scrimp and cut back. The comment was made, "Why can't we just keep spending the way we are? Why can't everybody just leave their budgets flat year over year?" I used to tell my employees, "If we're not moving forward, we're not standing still. We're going backwards because everything is moving on around us. We have to progress, we have to move." Brings me to another point. For anyone, back in the old days when dinosaurs roamed the earth and we still used an abacus for math, I did net present value calculations for my engineering projects. We had to understand the present value of money. What is a dollar worth today versus what is a dollar going to be worth in a year or two years? If we don't move this initiative forward, if we don't give it to the voters in March, then that means the next opportunity could be the May election. The May election, because of the timeframe to do the bond work and all of that kind of thing, would probably put us into winter of the following year instead of into the fall, when we can actually put shovel in the ground. So when you think about the present value of money, think about, will the bond rates continue to be favorable? Will construction costs stay flat? Unlikely. Will materials stay flat? Unlikely. And the revenue that we'll lose from another whole year of delay, and we're talking potentially millions of dollars, will never be made up. We'll never catch that up. Every year, it'll be one year less. So we need to think about the present value of money when we think about moving this forward. On your desks, I left you, we left you, a map, and it is of the proposed annexation areas. Now, these are voluntary annexations. These are not something that the city is pushing for. These are people who, through discussions, want to be annexed to Mammell. You can see the committed property just on the other side of the, of I-40. The interchange comes in about in the middle of that. And then the orange, we're in positive discussions with these property owners as well. But the interesting thing is, even more than that, look at the next page. This positions us, Mammell, Little Mammell, for 15,000 additional acres of developable property. Mr. Elliott said something about growing our base. This will grow our base. And this will do it in such a way that our town center will be the wonderful, friendly, local-feeling town center that we have today, but with revenue flowing in from the outskirts. This is so very important to us. I've heard it said that, you know, we need to listen to our constituents, and we do. By moving this forward, you're giving your constituents an opportunity to hear all the facts, attend the town meetings, and vote. You are not voting on a tax tonight. You're voting on whether or not to allow the 4,000 people that each of you represents to have their voices heard. So I appeal to you to please vote yes on these initiatives. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. City Attorney has some research he's done, I think.
At the last city council meeting, the question was asked whether it was true that the reason that we're including the Morgan Sewer Project is because a medical marijuana cultivation facility is interested in locating here. It's, of course, impossible for me to research whether someone is interested in locating here. I did, however, send a Freedom of Information Act request to the Arkansas Medical Marijuana Commission. They, they, requesting all applications for any medical marijuana cultivation facilities that had applied for a permit and that were, had a proposed location in the City of Mammell. They told me they couldn't give me the applications, that they'd be made semi-public at about December 15th. However, Scott Harden with DFNA over there did, the communications director, was able to tell me that there were absolutely no applications for medical marijuana cultivation facilities that listed a proposed location inside the City of Mammell. And so I know that had been a question floating around, and so I wanted to go ahead and answer that. And that was all I had. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Councilmember Holt, you asked to make a statement also?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've written it all down, it won't take just a couple of minutes. I just want to say I've agonized over this issue as a city council member more than any other issue that's ever come before us. I've gone through the entire gauntlet of emotions of what to say, what not to say, or who said what to who, when, and why. But in the end, it all comes down to two things. Knowing the numbers and serving the best interest of the people, citizens of Mammell that we represent. Permit me to make a personal story right quick, if I may, to explain my, why I think of it this way. Two months ago, my very mature daughter decided she needed to buy a car, and she needed to buy it right then, the last day of the month. So she talked Dad into going down to the car business, going to car dealership with her. She knew Dad has been a car salesman on again and off again for 30 years. I know the game. So I went through the process with her and explained to her all the numbers, where she is and how much she owes and how much you're going to trade in and how many miles and all kinds of stuff. Went through the whole thing. But she kept saying, "Well, Dad, I need a, I need a warranty, need a warranty." Okay, well, here's the deal. Allison, I've told you all the numbers, and if you understand the numbers and you know the numbers and you're satisfied with them, then the decision is yours. Okay, don't come talk to me afterwards, it's done. So she bought a car, I'm done. At any rate, this issue is basically the same as my daughter, with the exception of one thing. I've got to make the decision. I have to vote. As I see things, we have two positions here. On one hand, we have a group I call special interest, and on the other hand, I have the taxpayers. That leaves the city council in the middle, and we must decide what is best for the city's future. Ms. Burnett and Mr. Spivey have given us a no-nonsense financial briefing. They told it like it is, not like how we would like for it to be. We have a group of special interest folks who are interested in getting these three ordinances passed at all cost. By cost, I mean they have agreed to pay the special election as a favor for having election in March instead of May. Now, don't misunderstand me. That doesn't mean that they're not good people. They are simply businessmen who are looking to the future with their best interest in mind. In the car business, we call that beating the bushes to see what you come up with. They have to push every button that they can to achieve their goal. We just happen to be that button. Then we have the taxpayers who not, don't want to pay any more taxes. That doesn't make them bad either. In the meantime, it is our job to hear both sides and decide. There is one big question, however, and that is what exactly if the special interests we are planning to do if we do pass these three ordinances? I don't remember hearing anything about that until this afternoon, after I wrote this, and I had a great visit with Mr. Tommy Wright, and we discussed a great deal of action, what he would like to do. I just said, "Why didn't you tell me that sooner?" Each alderman will remember, just a few nights ago, we sat in a budget meeting with next year's budget. We made some hard decisions, but we had a great roundtable exchange of ideas. We will vote on that budget this month. I heard some very conservative ideas, including requesting mission statements from department heads. Well, my question is, what is our real mission here tonight? Do we go full broke, um, for broke ahead and pass everything? And, or do we take a little more time to reconsider all options? Once we vote, the resulting outcome rests on our shoulders. It is absolutely essential that we have time to gather all the facts. I am reminded by the challenge offered by Isaiah in chapter one, verse 18, when he said, "Come, let us reason together." Which of us can really say we are not being rushed into making this decision? I urge my city council associates to stop and think things through. If I am going to error, I would rather error on the side of caution. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Holt. There was, uh, I provided some information. It's actually under the mayor's comment, but it's a request Councilmember Mosley had made last, uh, council meeting about the bond debt and where we compared to other cities. And Ms. Burnett provided that information. It was in your council packet, so it's after ordinance number 946. The total debt for Mammell is $24,525,000 currently as of 12/31 of '16. And then there's the City of Little Rock, City of North Rock, City of Jacksonville, City of Sherwood, the City of Bryan, and the City of Benton that are all compared to those numbers for your information. So I wanted to be sure that you had that, and I wanted that brought out and didn't want to wait till we got to the mayor's comments, in case someone didn't note that was in their packet, so. Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, I've, I've got a couple of comments about that. I appreciate you preparing that, thank you.
Well, Ms. Burnett prepared it, not me, so, yeah, she provided it. And she, she, she can answer the questions if you have any, so.
Okay, yeah. I guess if, if we do pass this, all this stuff and the voters pass it, we would have maybe another 18 million in, in debt that would get us to 42 about, as far as total debt? Does that, that make sense?
Yeah, in round numbers, yes, sir.
Okay. And looking at the other cities is interesting. Little Rock has quite a bit of debt. They have $186 million in debt. Looks like North Little Rock, do they not have any debt at all, or is...
Now, this does not include any utility debt.
Uh-huh.
So for water, sewer, or electric, and it does not include any Amendment 78 financing. You know, where cities can go with a five-year loan directly with the bank. I do not know if they have any Amendment 78 financing as of this date. I do know they have $45 million in electric lines.
Okay, okay. So they, they, they really for, uh, they really don't have that much debt. Jacksonville's very little, nine million. Sherwood's 11 million. Comparing us to Bryant and Benton, we're, that'll be kind, we'll be kind of in their ballpark. They have higher debt, it looks like. And they, they also has, it's interesting to see also what they, they, their, their debt is, is based on. Franchise fees, property tax, sales tax, and that sort of thing. Thank you very much for that, that's good. I'll, I'll yield to anybody else that has some comments or questions about that, but I would like to come back. I've got some other questions once, once we get through this.
Okay, are there any other questions on the bond debt information? Okay.
Yeah, I guess I'll continue on then. I'd like to go back. I do have one more question about your presentation last week. We had talked about the secured, the, what we call the...
Would you like to address that from a legal standpoint?
And I, I confess, I was, I was watching you and not listening to you. So the question is, ask, if you can see, you can ask me again, I'm sorry, I was... Okay, I was, I was asking, what if the interchange passes, the, the tax passes? The bond tax passes? And what if the public safety tax does not pass? Since it's securing the, the other one? From a legal perspective, I don't think it necessarily, in that respect, it doesn't affect the bond tax. I think what it would require, though, is a reevaluation, and again, I'll come back to Leanne. It would require a reevaluation of how much security is necessary to issue the bonds. Now, with the, what we look at is we look at the additional taxes as we talked about, enhancing the payment of the bonds and if there's any shortfall. As long as there's enough money there in the bond tax to cover the bonds, we're fine. If we, if the underwriters looked at this and said, "We're concerned that without the public safety tax," or whatever we want to call the other tax, "we're not comfortable going out there and issuing the full amount of the bonds," then one option would be to issue a lower amount of bonds to make certain that there was enough coverage to assure a bond purchaser that there would be a high enough percentage of actual collections to cover the debt. Because what you don't want is a bond default. So that situation could result in a reevaluation of what is safe enough or what the market will be willing to accept in terms of security for the bond, for the bond projects. Might require looking at backing up the amount that you issue to make certain that there's a sufficient amount of coverage with the bond tax to assure a bond holder they're going to get paid on time. Now, I don't know what the implications of that are for the projects. I don't know. It could be that that's not an unreasonable deal, and if the actual collections of tax increase over time, which the history has been that they do, at least in Mammell, then you could issue enough to get started and then come back and issue another series of bonds once you prove that the tax have been collected. This is pure speculation on my part. I'm not telling you that's what you would do. But I think the fact that without the additional enhancement available, there'd be less money to pay the bonds, there certainly could be some issues as to how much you would safely want to go out and borrow under those circumstances. That's about the best answer I can give. But does it mean if it doesn't pass, you wouldn't necessarily go forward? Not necessarily. Not necessarily.
Okay, but you would make some kind of an evaluation at that point, is that correct?
That is exactly right. We would look at the current market. So your interest rate plays into this. And then, um, at, you know, updated tax estimates. And we would see what the maximum amount of project funds you could get at a certain coverage that would be acceptable in the marketplace. That's exactly right.
Now, having, having this secured thing, is this unusual or is this always the norm?
I would say we see a little bit of both.
Well, I think, I think when we talked about this a couple of weeks ago, uh, we talked about how this has kind of evolved over time. Uh, I think what we've seen is that the market has come to look for this sort of feature, if you will, in financing. Uh, we have, I have another of other community clients who are doing this right now. I think Leanne is working with some. I'm not working with as bond counsel. But this has gotten to be a not every time thing, but certainly a sometimes thing. Uh, I've got a deal, or a deal closing tomorrow, which that was just a straight bond tax. There's no enhancement involved.
Okay.
It's really just become another tool in the toolbox for cities to use.
So basically, though, if, once, once this election's held, if, if that one doesn't pass, you may be coming back saying, we have to talk about this a little bit or something?
Well, we would run updated numbers and see how it impacts the numbers.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. You remember, and I know you do because you've been on the council longer than others have. That's a different ordinance. And so y'all are going to talk about that before you issue those bonds. And you'll have the benefit of your banker's advice with respect to what is safe and what's likely to get you the best price for your bonds out in the market before you adopt that ordinance.
All right. That's all a question I've got with them. Does anybody have a follow-up?
I do.
Councilmember Holt, did you have a follow-up with them or?
Well, yes, I, I listened to the, uh, the meeting this morning and I, I saved until this morning so it'd be fresh on my mind. Uh, I was impressed beyond belief. And I do so appreciate both of you. And I was scribbling my notes as fast as I could go. So if I'm, um, so we're going to have to borrow extra money so that we can pay off? Is that, am I, am I misunderstanding where we're going there or what?
Yes, sir.
Probably, I mean.
Well, it's not a matter of borrowing extra money. It's having additional monies to pay off the money you do borrow.
Okay.
The additional tax gives you additional revenue that's available. And one of the things we talked about was exactly the mechanical process for how that happens. So long as the bond tax, which we anticipated will have, is more than sufficient to pay the bonds, your additional tax is going to be used for the other purposes you intended it to be used for. It's there as additional security, uh, enhancement, if you will.
Okay.
The intention is that if it's not necessary that it be used to pay bonds, it will immediately go back into the general fund to be used for the other purpose for which it's been approved. That's the concept. So it's not borrowing more money. It's approving an additional tax which will provide credit enhancement, additional security for the payment of the bonds, but only if it's needed.
Does that cause more, a higher interest later on or in your overall collection of debt? Am I?
I'm gonna let...
Um, well, I'm, yeah...
I give you my opinion. I don't think it has anything to do with causing you higher interest later. It has to do with how at the time you sell the bonds and what the current market rate is at the time you sell the bonds, it's perceived by the investing public.
Okay.
And it all ties to that. We talked before about if you're gonna buy, if you're trying to decide whether or not to buy my bond or his bond, and I tell you for every dollar I owe you, I'm gonna make revenue of a dollar fifty. But he tells you for every dollar that he owes you, he's gonna make a dollar seventy-five. You see, that's a more, that could be perceived as a more secure investment. And so the reason why we're proposing pledging this second tax to the bonds is so it'll be perceived as a better credit.
Very good. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Let me say again, I'm not an investment banker. I'm just a lawyer. And so I don't want to be in a position of advising you on the financial aspects. I understand them, I think. But I'm a lawyer and I want to make sure that I'm not offering advice. And so please pay attention to Ms. Burnett. She's the expert in that field.
Councilmember Kelly?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. A question I have is we talked about federal changes to the tax code a few weeks back. And I wanted to know what your perception of what those changes may be at this point and how that would affect this bond issue going forward.
Well, I will tell you that I received an announcement this morning or a little short summary about what the Senate passed Saturday evening, I believe it was. And that bill does, uh, it eliminates advanced refundings. So what we talked about on the 2015 bonds is still relevant. With regard to these bonds, you ask a very good question. And we are actually still trying to analyze the impact of that. When we offer bonds, typically certain types of bonds have different optional redemption dates or different periods of time where they tell the bondholders, we will not restructure or repay or refinance early. For bank qualified, that's typically five years. For other standard bonds, it's ten years. And we've seen recent years, they've been at par. So if you decided to pay off or restructure the city's bonds in five years and the call date was five years, then that could all be done dollar for dollar. Years ago, when I got into this business as an issuer in nineteen ninety-nine, there were premium calls. So let's say you wanted the flexibility to restructure it in three years instead of five. You would say, okay, I'll do it dollar for dollar at five years, but I'll agree to do it for a dollar oh-two at three years. So there's some discussion about whether or not those, that type of term is going to come back into play. But we really don't know yet.
And that's really more of a market function than is a legal function.
Correct.
But, um, you know, and I was, as I was listening to the good comments you got from your constituents earlier, I, some of us were around back the last time the tax code changed in nineteen eighty-six. And, you know, we see these things going cycles. They're not always the same cycle. But it could certainly mean that from a market standpoint, investors began looking for things like prepayment penalties or prepayment charges, uh, which they've done in the past. We just don't know.
Any other questions for Mr. Spivey or Ms. Burnett? All right. Thank y'all very much. Appreciate y'all being here tonight. Councilmember Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question and then I want to make a statement. Uh, the question is, I've been hearing, and I apologize, I didn't even think of it, but I've been hearing the community service fee amounted to some seven hundred, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. Does that include the businesses too? Or is that just residential?
No, that, that's the entire community service fee.
Okay. Okay, now my statement. You know, I've sat in this chair a lot of years and I'm speaking to the council. I've sat in this chair a lot of years and I can't tell you how many times that I have been approached, talked to, and what have you about this third entrance. It's very important to the people of Moll Mel or at least a significant portion of them. Now, we just found out a couple of months ago that, and that's part of the rush on this. We just found out a couple of months ago that the highway department isn't going to fund this until at least twenty twenty-one. And I bet you it's going to be twenty twenty-five or later, if they ever do it. Now, if the people in Moll Mel want the, well, let me say something else too. I disagree with Alderman Holt. It is not on my shoulders if we vote to send this to the people. It's not on my shoulders. There was, it's on the citizens' shoulders to make their decisions. Now, one other thing that was said that I don't care for is that we are endorsing this tax by sending it to the people. I'm not endorsing anything. I may vote against it at the vote, at the voting booth. But that's not what we're voting on here, okay? We're not endorsing anything. Now, sales taxes should be decided by the citizens. I feel strongly about that. And I think that's probably a legal issue too, but I'm not going to go there. I'm not an attorney. But it should go to the citizens. Now, for us to sit here and say, no, we are not going to send this to the citizens, I think is wrong. And I don't think I could live with my conscience knowing that I am not doing my job. I'm not representing the citizens. I'm making their decisions for them whenever, if we shoot this down, if I vote no, I'm deciding for them that they've got no say in this. And I think that's wrong. I think I have a moral, ethical obligation to vote yes for this so that the citizens can have opportunity to vote on it and let them make the decision. Now, another thing is we've already stated, and I'm going to restate it, that the citizens should be better prepared to make this decision if they vote on it after we've had one, two, or three town hall meetings. We're not just putting them out there cold. That's not our intent at all. Now, so far as special elections go, we can argue till the cow comes home that special elections only draw certain people or that this is being driven by a small group of people, greedy, greedy people. No, this is just sending an option to the people. If they want that entrance bad enough, then I guess they'll vote it up. If they don't want it that bad or they don't want more taxes, they'll vote it down. But I respect, and I'll tell you right now, I don't care which way they vote. I'm going to support them a hundred and ten percent, no matter how I feel about it because it's their decision. Every election, you have a significant number of people that do not vote. That's their choice. And that's also true in special elections. But I don't have a crystal ball and I don't know that we're only going to have a few special interest people show up at the booth. But I do know it's my obligation to give them the opportunity to show up. Okay, I'll get off my soapbox now. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Saunders. Councilmember Mosley?
I've got, got a couple more questions, uh, and these are for the mayor here. I've, I've had some confused constituents and I'm not sure I'm straight either. So I was going to ask you to just clarify. How long, uh, if, if all this passes, how long do you think it would take before the interchange is finished? Are we looking at two years? Are we looking at five years? What are we looking at?
Well, I, I don't have a crystal ball either, so I'll tell you that right now. But I do think that if, if the tax moves forward in March, the highway department would then start doing the utility relocation projects and the right-of-way acquisition. Because they're not going to do it till they're, till they know there's money coming. They're not going to start that part of it.
Till they see we've got the money.
Till they see we've got the money. And based on that, they're telling me on their best timeline, that all would be completed December of eighteen. And that's when the project could be bid. As soon as all that work was done and the right-of-ways acquired, they could bid the project. So let's say January eighteen, and I haven't looked at their bid letting schedule, but, sorry, January nineteen, I'm sorry, January nineteen. And then two years to construct is what I've been told. So it would be open, worst-case scenario, barring unforeseen weather, January twenty-one, which is when they, the highway department has told us the funds would be available to start the interchange at best case.
Down to January twenty-one. Okay, thank you very much. That helps.
And that's coming from the planning department of the highway department. Those are, those numbers came from them, not me, so.
Okay. Let's see, and once again, let's see, we've got the, the interchange was expected to cost twelve million and we've got fifteen point six million in the interchange question. What, is it the roads that would go through the, uh, what, what's the additional amount in there?
The estimate's a little over twelve million dollars. It's like twelve point three. I put a contingency in there for right-of-way acquisition and for just unforeseen circumstances. So I put a construction cost, when I instructed Ms. Burnett, of fourteen million dollars to put in there for construction cost. Just because if you delay construction a little bit, you, you run out of, you know, the, the cost goes up and all that. So then the fifteen million dollars is include the bond financing portion of it and, uh, underwriters' fees and the attorney's fees and, and that sort of thing.
Okay.
Interest.
All right, yeah.
What else? The debt service reserve. Okay, and it covers the debt service reserve too, yes.
And I'll just make my little statement, then I'm done. Basically, I'll be, I'll be voting no on those three ordinances that we vote on tonight. Because I, I think it should be done at a, uh, primary election or a general election. And I also disagree with collecting more money than, and even trade out of the public ser, or public community service fee on the public service tax. All right, that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mosley. Any other questions or comments? Okay, uh...
I have, I have a comment.
I'm sorry. Okay. Councilmember Kelly?
One thing I think the, uh, that I'd like for our constituents to hear is the community service fee is seven hundred thousand a year. It's been very stagnant. And I don't like the community service fee. I'm a huge proponent of public safety. I think everyone in this room knows that. But I don't like paying taxes more than anybody else. I don't like the idea of a sales tax and I don't like an idea of paying, uh, one of the highest property taxes around. But you know what? That's what it takes to have a city you could be proud of, live in, and feel safe in to pay taxes. I think the reality of it is, if this city is going to continue to grow and be prosperous and be safe, we need to go for this. The thing I do like about a sales tax is its equal. It taxes everybody that comes into our city. It's not just the property owners. So, and as far as the special election rhetoric I've heard personally, I believe in the voters of Moll Mel. We have an intelligent constituency that will become well-informed through public forum and make the decision they need to make on election day regardless of when we do it. And to wait a period of time to spend the funds for construction could cost us millions. And we need a third entrance. I've heard that for the seventeen years I've lived in Moll Mel. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Kelly. What I think's important too, and it's been mentioned several times, uh, Mr. Elliott mentioned that he worked on this project when he was on the, the board. And, and since I've been here since, uh, two thousand and seven as the mayor, I mean, it's been my number one project. And I think, you know, we've got a chance to control our own destiny in this possibility here. I've waited on the highway department. We've, we've relied on an earmark from the federal government. Those are gone. You're not going to get an earmark from the federal government anymore. And so I think we have a chance to control our destiny. And not only do we have a chance to control the destiny for the interchange, but we've got a chance to control the actual interchange itself. We lost the interchange at four thirty and it's nobody's fault. I mean, at the time, Moll Mel Incorporated, they incorporated what they thought they could take care of, probably with the funds they had coming in. And that was probably very scary for that board at that time. But the, the thing is, is now we have a chance to build a tax base at an interchange on the interstate. And I think we need to take advantage of that. And if we were asking for other communities to, uh, participate in it, then we might have to give up parts of that land. Also, you know, I got an email today and it said that, well, why don't, you know, let's just get Walmart to DNX from North Little Rock and come to Moll Mel. And I was like, how's that going to happen? I mean, I'm sure I can go to Mayor Smith and say, we want to take your Walmart, which is a pretty large tax producer, and we're going to just take it, you know, or we'd like to have it. Would you be willing to give it up? I think I know his answer to that because it'd be the same answer I would give him. And I've always heard that, well, we ran Walmart out of town. I, I've not been able to ever find documented evidence that that occurred. They went to where land was cheaper or they went to where they could do what they thought they wanted to do. So I don't blame anybody for Walmart leaving and going into North Little Rock. And I don't blame North Little Rock for accepting them. I mean, that's part of it. But I think we do have a chance at this interchange to build our sales tax base. And then with the sewer project that would be going to Morgan area, which is north Moll Mel, I think we need to start calling it, that gives us another place to grow retail. And so I think it's important to the city and I think we give the citizens a chance to vote on the issue. And if it's important enough to them and we sell the message well enough, then they'll support it. Thank you very much. Councilmember Timmons?
You know, I've been hearing about this third entrance. Let's see, I was on the, uh, city council in ninety-five, if I'm not mistaken. So this isn't something that just came up, you know? People have been talking about it, you know, soon, every time you sit on that boulevard, I said, rushing back on the bou- I sat Russian back on the boulevard, coming back today to make sure, uh, I was here to vote. But I'm voting to give our constituents a chance. I'm not voting on whether, whether, you know, for the tax or against the tax. I'm voting on, you know, and every time, every time we push this off or move it, you know, the price gets bigger and bigger and bigger, and it costs us more, and then it gets more out of our reach. And we keep talking about, or not we, but, you know, people keep talking about, you know, this special interest group. Well, if it's benefiting the masses, God bless them, you know? If it's benefiting the masses, you know? I've been getting calls both ways. I've been getting called both ways, and they're probably about equal, you know? So this is giving them a chance to vote on the, the problem, you know, that we've been talking about for years and years and years, so, um, that's all. But it's up to us.